June 20, 2016. Madam Clerk, this is the legal order.
Mr. Fracassi?
Yeah, here.
Ms. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Breitman?
Here.
Mr. Manalbong?
Here.
Ms. Seymour?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Present.
Mr. Frazer?
Here.
Your southern numbers present.
Thank you. Would you all stand up and pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do have a pretty extensive agenda for this evening. We'll start with presentations and, Mr. Mayor, do you have some presentations?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council.
Good evening.
And, Dirk Banks. Tonight, I have the honor of presenting a tribute to Leonard Baruch. And I would like to ask Mr. Baruch to come forward. This presentation, we are declaring June 20, 2016, Leonard Baruch Day in the city of Southfield.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, would you have his wife move forward?
Oh, absolutely. Actually, I was going to bring her up too.
Yeah.
Please. And?
She'd be mad if I didn't tell her that.
So, on this prestigious occasion, whereas Leonard P. Baruch was honored by, honored by the city of Southfield as a productive and involved citizen for over 55 years, whereas Mr. Baruch received his Bachelor of Science degree in Library Science from Wayne State University and worked for 32 years as a librarian and library administrator for the Detroit Board of Education, and whereas after serving his country from 1945, or the '43 to '46 in the United States Army, Mr. Baruch was appointed to the very first Southfield Public Library Board after its creation by the Southfield City Charter in 1958, and served as a champion for literacy, education, culture, and history until he stepped down from the Library Board in 1982. Whereas Leonard Baruch is an active member of Convocation Charisatic, having served as Executive Director and Youth Director and Honors Board of Directors, and whereas Leonard Baruch is a faithful, active member of the Southfield community and continues to promote the quality of life through his volunteer efforts. Now therefore, therefore, the result, I, Kenson Seiber, Mayor, City of Southfield County, Volcan State of Michigan, do hereby proclaim June 20, 2016, as Leonard P. Baruch Day in the city of Southfield, and join his wife Ann and family in thanking him for his many contributions to our community.
Thank you very much. Great pleasure for me to have sent this, and it's been a pleasure being a resident and citizen of the city of Southfield since 1962. It's been a wonderful community, been a wonderful experience for my entire family. My children went from public schools here, had wonderful education from that group. We have four doctors and one lawyer, so obviously they will work out well. It's a very important matter for me. I did reach out for this conversation, it's much appreciated, but I did all of these things, I do all of these things because I believe in them and because somebody's going to come and pat me on the back. So, I thank all of you that are sitting up here doing your volunteer work as well. And I trust the city of Southfield is in very good hands. I see my good friend, Dr. Cassie, and just a wonderful thing, and the librarian at the city, Mr. Peewang, has been very, very gracious in handling this entire man. So, thank you to all of you, and my blessings upon all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. While I'm right here, I just want to say that they have been married 65 years.
Whoa!
Ann asked me, "Do you think it's going to work out?" And you're going to be...
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four, yeah, people, right?
Exactly. Middle of August.
Middle of August. So, and he goes to work every day, he's not a couch potato. He's keeping an active life, and I congratulate you on that as well. Welcome to you.
Our next item on our agenda is another presentation by Mayor.
Good evening once again. I'd like to call our Parks Acting Director, Dr. Block, forward. It's that time again. We're coming on July, and this is a joint resolution from the council and the mayor declaring a month of July Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas parks and recreation systems are dedicated to enhancing the quality of life for millions of residents and communities around the world through the recreation programming, leisure activities, and conservation efforts. And whereas parks, recreation activities, and leisure experiences provide opportunities for young people to live, grow, develop, and contribute to members of society, create lifelines and continuous life experiences for older members of the community, generate opportunities for people to come together and experience the sense of community, and pay dividends to communities by attracting business, jobs, and increasing housing values. And whereas the dedicated administrative staff and employees of the Southfield Parks and Recreation Department work hard to ensure that Southfield parks and recreation facilities are safe and accessible places for all citizens to enjoy, and whereas July, the busiest month of the year for the Parks and Recreation Department, has been recognized by the National Recreation Park Association as Parks and Recreation Month, now therefore be a result that we, the mayor and council of the city of Southfield County, Volcan State of Michigan, do hereby proclaim July 2016 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Southfield, and are all encouraged to celebrate healthy, active lifestyles while participating in their choices of recreation and park activities. Be a further result that we, the mayor and council, convey our collective thanks and appreciation to the national, state, and community organizations that work in the parks and recreation industry, and we especially thank and recognize our own outstanding Parks and Recreation Department staff. The citizens of Southfield also extend their thanks and appreciation to the administration staff of the Southfield Parks and Recreation Department for their outstanding contributions to the quality of life of our residents. Dated on the date of June 20.
Thank you, Mayor Seiber. The last proclamation is definitely going to be a tough act to follow, but good evening, Mayor, members of council, as well as members of the audience. On behalf of the residents in the city of Southfield, Parks and Recreation Board, Parks and Recreation Department staff, I'm honored to accept this proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month. The city of Southfield is truly blessed with the Parks and Recreation Department with a veritable smorgasbord of programs and events for everyone between the ages of four and 104. The following are a sampling, if you will, of upcoming programs, events, and rental opportunities since today's the first day of summer and beyond. Family Fun Safety Night, featuring family movie Under the Stars, will take place this Wednesday, June 22, from 5 till 9 p.m. on the Civic Center Municipal Campus. The sports arena pool officially opens this Saturday, June 25, at noon. Summer camp is right around the corner. Tadpole, Wildwood, and Evergreen begins on Monday, June 27. It's still not too late to sign up your child for this awesome summer experience. You can contact our main desk at (248) 796-4620 to register. Berg gazebo concerts begin on July 5 and run every Tuesday through August 16. They run from 7 to 8:30 p.m. at the Berg Historical Park. Southfield Junior Metro Hook and Golf Championship will be held on Friday, July 29, at 9 a.m. Beachwoods Golf Course. Senior Appreciation Night will be held 5:30 to 8 p.m. Wednesday, August 23, also at the Berg Historical Park. Are you interested in the, or in the process of making wedding plans? Please consider the historical Berg Church and surrounding grounds as a potential location. Are you interested in working out in a stress-free environment? Consider joining the Beachwoods Fitness Center for as little as $144 per year. Are you considering having a family reunion? Then you may want to check into our well-meeting picnic shelters in Pebble Creek, Civic Center, and Beachwoods Park. Thank you again, Mayor and council, for this proclamation. As always, make contact for additional information, our front desk at (248) 796-4620. Check us out on the web at www.cityofsouthfield.com, or also on Facebook. And again, everyone, have a safe and enjoyable summer. Thank you.
Our next item is by our community relations manager, Mr. Michael Mannion.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council. For the viewing audience, my name is Michael Mannion, community relations director for the city of Southfield. I have some important news to share this evening regarding the city's new rubbish recycling program. Beginning July 1, Rizzo Environmental Services will begin with the city as a new lease contract. Residents' weekly trash pickup will not change, nor will any other collection guidelines. Those will all remain the same. We will actually just have an increased level of service from the new contract, as you saw in the budget presentation, including some cost savings to residents as well. One of the many new benefits in the contract is the 64-gallon bin, my right here. That will be available free of charge, and residents can replace the order one. I should note, these are not required. You can continue to use your current bin, but this is an additional service that's been provided in the new contract. As you can see, these are on wheels, so they're very convenient, and they have an inked lid, and right on the top is going to be an imprint of all the recycling guidelines. Can make it very easy for folks to see what can and cannot come in the bin. As I said, it's very much more convenient than the current bins, and one of the nice things is there, it does not have to be stored, so all the recycling material can just be tossed in there in a particular order. In order to order the bin, beginning today, actually, June 20, by calling (866) 772-8900. Again, that number's (866) 772-8900. They can also be ordered online at risoservices.com by clicking on the City of Southfield link. They will start being delivered free of charge beginning July 1. As well as of today, we've had, we've seen only 400 carts have been ordered. And again, just starting today, so we're up and running on a good track there. We have with us this evening, Mr. Sam Karabagnum, who's municipal manager with Rizzo. He will be here to answer any additional questions we have and provide more information.
Hello, councilman Mayor.
Good evening.
What questions might you have?
Are there any questions? Mr. Manalbong?
Two questions. First is, what color will the Southfield bins be? Will they be in a red color, or will they be a separate, a different color?
They'll be the same color, red.
They'll have the Southfield...
Southfield, Southfield one, yes.
And then, I understand that people are very excited to receive the, to order the carts today. I know the link on the website was not active yet. Is that something that's being fixed?
It became active late today. It should be good going forward.
All right.
Took a little time, we had to, I made sure things were right before we just threw out there. Some adjustments in some of the newsletter items, and we just wanted to make sure it was correct before it went out and something incorrect went, went right out of bounds.
Are the bins numbered, so you know whose it belongs to?
They have, they have serial numbers on them, and whether, whether it's tracked up or not is a different sort, but they are, they are distributed and associated with each truck.
All right. And then, I think it's my last question. With the current recycling bins, if one gets damaged, lost, whatever, it rolls down the street and the car runs over, it could come to City Hall and purchase a new one. If, for whatever reason, one of these bins gets lost or damaged, how would someone request a new one?
It's always okay when damage local repair. It's a matter of our service to damage the carts. If we should drop it or squeeze it or break it, we'll fix it and replace it, but they're fairly durable. They hold on for a very, very long time.
And if they go missing?
Sorry?
If they go missing?
Listen, you probably need to file a report, and we'll have to work that through the DPDW and then use...
Thank you.
I want to also add, these are 65 or 64 gallon carts. Okay, so they're, they're good size, and should set up some mistakes.
Mr. Breitman?
This came up during the, you know, previous meetings. None of you have a new fleet, all new trucks?
Yes, correct.
Okay. The, the other thing, and I understand they will be diesel?
Diesel bar equipment, yes.
Okay. Is there any pushers somewhere down the road who probably moved to natural gas, perhaps?
Well, it's always something we're looking at. Close to 400 trucks right now, and if, if the, if it presented itself good enough, we would probably consider moving that way, but it would be something in the future that we'd consider.
Okay, all right. Well, oh, and just to follow up, I think, honestly, there's a cost benefit associated with, you know, major purchases like that. And, you know, from an industry, from an industry standpoint, waste management, I mean, your, the water's collection industry, do they are moving toward the natural gas vehicles because they are violent and...
There is a move, there is a move towards natural gas vehicles. It is relatively new in the scope of things, but it's quite an infrastructure cost to put this in, and then when you see diesel fuel prices drop again and get competitive with what natural gas is, it throws your, throws your projection off and your pricing model off. So, at this point, we're still with diesel, and yes, to answer your question, natural gas is an option. It's out there, and it's, it's, it's growing.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Cruz?
Yeah, our previous, you know, we worked with, had a service that did for homes where they'd be doing larger disposal type things, where they would bring out a bin to the home, and so you could dump large quantities, attach for, for a cost number. Do you all have that same type of service?
As far as dumpsters go, construction, construction projects, things like that?
It was, they were residential, I mean, not necessarily construction, but maybe even smaller residential. They were like almost disposable type things.
They, they, they have, Waste Management had the bag service every time.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have that, that's a Waste Management type of, but that's available. There's no reason you can't use that if you, if you wanted to. We have dumpsters, we have two-yard to 40, two-yard containers that are available if you should need a, a clean out. We can do any type of collection. We have full service cover.
And that's something I wanted to find out.
Yes, or if you have a question, I'd like to appear in time.
Any other questions? Mr. Manalbong?
I understand that with this program, there also is a rewards program for those who recycle?
Yes, there's a rewards program that, as we get, as we get going, rewards program began in October, something, early October, so we'll have more information for it coming down the line.
I noticed that the lid opens very easily. Is there a reason that you don't have a catch on it? Because sometimes while binos kind of knock the thing over and go to dinner?
Well, the lids, yeah, they open easy. They're, they stay closed pretty well, and the weather, if an animal should call, it's going to find its way to get that thing open. As far as lashes go, they can't be able to latch on because when you tip the cart, it has to get the open bill of material out. So, to answer your question, no, there's not a latch on them right now.
And I would add, Council President, if I may, that they're quite heavy, so it's the, the bin itself and the lid itself is quite, is quite heavy, so it shouldn't be a pretty big dust on when it happens.
Okay. I'll follow you.
It's hard.
Okay. Any other questions? I don't think this takes any kind of a motion on our part or anything, it's just a presentation, so thank you very much, and we're looking forward to you sharing and taking up our recycling stuff.
Yes, thank you very much. Very, very pleased to have you, Mr. Manalbong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Fracassi.
I might be a little out of order, but this young man, I've known him ever since he was a little kid, but his grandfather was a commercial removal, which was one of our first removal companies that serviced the city. And between him and his dad, they know the city backwards and forwards, so them taking care of residents historically has been great.
Very good.
Thank you.
And I would just like to reiterate again, the new contract will begin on July 1 with Rizzo, and the number again to call for the 64-gallon bin, and this is again entirely free of charge to residents. It is not required, you can continue to use your same bin if you prefer, but it's a new convenience that's been offered in the new contract. And that number again is (866) 772-8900. That's beginning today, call to order those bins, and they will be delivered free of charge beginning July 1.
Can you just have multiple?
Mr. Cruz, can you get multiple, like any of two?
Two, no, just on these, you can only have one for the 64-gallon. However, the city will still continue to sell the smaller hand-held bins, and those are seven dollars for an additional replacement bin you can buy as many as you like, and those are available here at City Hall in the neighborhood of the Fitness Center.
But if they're using a kind of a way of dumping that bin, they're going to be very happy to get up the truck and dump the little bins?
Well, you know, it's, they're both being collected, so regardless, you know, it's really the preference of the residents, so either one is acceptable. I think folks finding these are much more convenient. Again, they are on wheels, there is an inked lid, and then obviously the size, you can see, can hold a lot more, so it's not something that necessarily has to be taken out every week depending upon your consumption, but I think folks will find it is much more convenient.
Let me ask you another question, and that is, assuming a person decides, "Ah, I keep the bin I have."
Sure.
And then, six miles down the road, they say, "Hey, I'd like to go to the large bin." Is there a time limit on when you have to order these, or is it open for however long?
A great question, Council President. To my knowledge, you can order them at any time, so you do not have to necessarily call, you know, today or within the next few weeks. This should be offered moving forward. It'll be available should someone decide that they'd like to try the new bin, I mean, so you can order that at any time.
Okay, and the last question I have is, the contract starts on July 1, that's right. When will our residents see trucks on the street?
Again, it will be, nothing will change in terms of collection. It will still be residents' regular, scheduled collection day. That includes rubbish, recycling, yard waste, branches and limbs. All of that will continue on the same day that residents have normally had the pickups. So, none of that will change, none of the collection guidelines will change. The major changes we'll see here in this contract, as I said, is the cost savings to residents in addition to the new 64-gallon bins that are being offered free of charge.
Okay, so the Friday pickups, we'll see a new truck on Friday?
Conceivably, that would be it.
You'll see, Rizzo's burgundy trucks?
Yes.
Out on the road, and this isn't just recycle, this is all of our services.
Yes.
And I just want to know substantial savings for our residents. This is a, that is a bidding process, the consumers want on this one.
Absolutely.
Mr. Frazer, we might want to mention, since we're talking about rubbish collection, about the delay due to the 4th of July?
Yeah, as I can speak to that, by the way, Mayor. As Mayor Seiber pointed out, there will be a delay, there will be no garbage pickup on Independence Day, July 4, and collection will be delayed one day thereafter all week. And all of the delays, already holiday delays, are on the city's website, and in the city calendar, and in the Southfield Public Newsletter, and cable feedings. So, those are all advertised in the city communication vehicles. So, if anyone's ever in doubt, they can check out the resources and...
I want to thank you for mentioning that because we've had complaints...
Absolutely.
A lot of people forget that on certain holidays, we delay the rubbish collection.
That's correct.
So, Monday, July 4, there will not be rubbish collection, start the regular pickup on the...
And as long as we're talking about that, I'd like to remind people that the, your garbage, your trash goes out no sooner than 4 p.m., the day before it's supposed to be picked up. So, if your, if your day is Tuesday, you should not put your trash out before 4 p.m. on Monday, and then you should pick your, take your garbage can back in as quickly as possible, but no later than noon the following day.
That's correct. And we do ask that rubbish cans do not exceed 32 gallons. Just have to bear in mind, you have to be able to lift it, you know, that's physically being lifted, so I don't think it's supposed to exceed 60 pounds of weight, but not to exceed the 32-gallon size. But again, all of the collection guidelines remain the same, such as size, weight limits and whatnot.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have three appointments, one appointment, two reappointments.
I'm going to ask the council for a motion in a moment. I have the two reappointments to the Parks and Recreation Board. That's Brandon Gray, who has been serving for the last couple of years, and Ron Roberts. Mr. Roberts is not here this evening, he had a death in the family and has left town. I'd also like to announce that I'm making an appointment of a youth representative, a non-voting youth representative to the Parks and Recreation Board, and that is Amani Johnson. I know Mr. Gray and Mr. Johnson are both here. If they would come up... Steve, I want to mention that Amani is a graduate of Southfield Public Schools, Southfield Lutheran High School, and is currently a sophomore, just finished a sophomore year at Central Michigan University. Comes back and forth from Mount Pleasant to Southfield regularly, and is a major, majoring in public administration. He's been doing some shadowing of our city planner, as well as following me around on a few things to get valuable experience as he works on pursuing a career in public administration. And Mr. Gray is also a product of the Southfield Public Schools, who's followed his father's footsteps on the Parks and Recreation Board, and we're glad to be reappointing both he and Mr. Roberts.
Council, it would be a pleasure.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we support the appointment of Mr. Amani Johnson as a youth representative for the Parks and Rec Board. Mr. Brandon Gray, reappointment, Parks and Recreation, as well as Ron Roberts, Parks and Recreation.
It's been moved...
It's been moved by Mr. Cruz, supported by Ms. Morris, that we make the two reappointments and the appointment, uh, to the Parks and Recreation Board. Is there any discussion? All those that favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you, uh, sort in the new appointee and the reappointee?
Is that this to you? And, um, this is, uh, this thanks was very good, and then the council would like to , uh, to.
You, uh, take your shirt.
He'd be vocal rights for him, he's here vice mayor of the United States Constitution of this state, the Southfield City Charter, and should make it formal on the Parks and Recreation Board, and for the city of Southfield County, Vol. State of Michigan, according to the rest of your building.
Amani, your parents are here, would you like to introduce them?
My mom, her name is, she was the one who was just taking pictures, and my dad is standing next to her, Antoine.
Brandon, if you were on somebody?
Oh, yeah, I have my, uh, my lovely mother, Dr. Sylvia Simpson Gray, recording me today.
Okay, go this way, and, uh, council, my congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
I'd like to move the minutes, uh, committee of the whole meeting on May 9th, the special committee of the whole meeting on May 13th, the committee of the whole meeting on May 16th, as submitted.
It's been moved by Mr. Fracasi, supported by Mr. Cruz, and we approve the minutes of May the 9th, May the 13th, and May the 16th, as submitted. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I will abstain.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? All those that favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Yes.
Thank you. We have a fair number of, of consent agenda items, I'm going to, I, uh, consent agenda item F, and, um, I will read the, uh, a little bit of a synopsis of the other items, so that, uh, listening audience will know what we're going on. The first, uh, item on our consent agenda is a volunteer medical first responder, uh, program, it's a SAWA of Michigan, and it's an organization that is a volunteer organization that will work in the, the city of Southfield, it's already effective at Oak Park, and a number of other cities around the United States, and, uh, they have been, uh, communicating and working through the fire department, uh, the, uh, paramedics, so that, uh, the paramedics knows exactly what's going on. This group will be licensed to, uh, it'll just first aid, it will do no transportation, uh, they will, they won't do the things that the paramedics do, except the initial first aid, uh, and the reason for the, the, uh, purpose of this group is, uh, it will, sometimes people have, uh, emergencies, and, uh, before they get a chance to call nine-one-one, sometimes there's someone by this train to do things, but with this organization, if someone calls them first, they will be instructed to make sure they call nine-one-one first, or this organization will refer to nine-one-one, and so then our paramedics will be on their way, and then this first aid group will be able to provide initial response until first, until our, um, paramedics get here. So, it's a volunteer program, and the fire department has sanctioned it, um, after many discussions, because there was some concern on the part of the paramedics that, um, it was a, a way of trying to replace the paramedics, this absolutely does not replace the paramedics, and they're comfortable with that. So, that's agenda item A. Agenda item B is a continu- continuation of services from the Geographic Information Services Incorporated, and everyone knows what G I S is, if you've got a cell phone or any other kind of electronic device, G I S can tell you within three square feet on the face of the earth where you're at, and we use the G I S, uh, service to, uh, for a variety of tasks inside the city of Southfield, and it includes water, sewer, streets, highways, forestry, engineering, building, code enforcement, administration, police, fire, emergency management, and, and others, and the contract is up, they want to, uh, renew the contract, the contract for an annual fee of a hundred ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars, and, uh, it will be for the period of two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen, and there's funds in the water and sewage department budget to cover that. Agenda item C is about the state of Michigan's general retention schedule for local government records. We have a lot of records, paper records, and other records that we store, some are stored for a short period of time, some are for a long period of time, and the state of Michigan has come up with a standard length of re- of retention for all records, and our city clerk has asked to, for us to, uh, adopt the state of Michigan retention, uh, schedule, so that we aren't in sync with the, the state of Michigan, that's agenda item C. Agenda item D is the Southfield Police Department watch guard cameras system for prisoner transport, uh, and animal control of, uh, officer truck. Um, if you've been listening to the news recently, you know that, uh, there's a high risk of, of lawsuits in the event that a prisoner's been transported from one place to another, and there's some injury that takes place, and, uh, our police do not want that to happen, they don't want anyone to get hurt, but in the event that something happens, they want to have documentation of what exactly went on, so they want to purchase cameras for the police, two for the police van, and one for the animal control officer on their truck, on his truck, so that, as you also know, there are times when our animal control officer has to take action, and again, it's best documented, documented by, uh, the camera. The cost for the three cameras is eleven thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars, and, uh, there's a, a three thousand dollar, um, grant that can come from the, uh, Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority Risk Avoidance Program, and, um, there is money in the budget for that. Item E is, uh, the Southfield Police Department, the United States Department of Justice, two thousand sixteen Everburn Memorial, uh, Justice Assistant Grant, it's called the JAG Grant, and each year, our, our police write a grant to the, uh, Everburn Memorial Fund for a grant, this year, they would like to purchase twenty-two tasers, class three tasers, to replace the tasers that our officers carry, uh, the ones that they, they're carrying now have reached their end of, uh, active life, and, uh, they want to, uh, replace these, twenty-two at a time, and there are about sixty-one or sixty-two officers on the road, so it'll take about three-year turn, uh, to replace all three of them, uh, replace all of the, uh, tasers. The current cost estimate to replace twenty-two tasers is thirty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, the city, through the police department, has been designated to receive the grant funding in the amount of twenty-two thousand one hundred dollars, and funding has been identified in the budget to pay for the remaining eleven thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars, and the digital grant through the Michigan Municipal Risk, uh, Authority is, is, uh, the one for eleven thousand dollars. Item F has been pulled, and item G is the authorization to contract for bus transportation service from the Parks and Rec Department, and our youngsters and seniors, um, are transported to different programs, and, uh, the Parks and Rec Department is asking us to approve a, uh, contract for Durham School Services, uh, bus transportation, to the tune of, uh, twenty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and it's, the money for this is to come from the Parks and Recreation Therapy Recreation Account, the Camp Tadpole Account, Camp Wildwood Account, the Camp Evergreen Account, and Beethood's Account. Uh, that is the first half of our, uh, so I will entertain a motion. It's been moved by Mr. Uh, Mr. Brightwell, supported by Ms. Morris, that we approve the consent agenda items as presented, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Fracasi?
I would, uh, just point out that I will vote no on A, and my, uh, reasons were given at the meeting committee of the whole.
On which one?
And approval agreement of the nonprofit housing corporation.
Well, we're not there yet. We did only the first A, B, C, D, E, and G. All right?
I'll show that anyway.
Okay. Uh, is there any other discussion? Uh, those that favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. The last half of the, the list is, uh, item H, it's authorization to purchase replacement road grader for, uh, Public Works Department, the road grader that we have is old, needs to be replaced, and the, uh, Public Works Department is asking to re- to purchase a two thousand sixteen John Deere six seventy G series road grader, and it's two hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars, minus a sixteen thousand dollar trade-in for the, uh, with, for the current one, and a final total cost of two hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Item I is authorization to purchase replacement dump truck for the Public Works Department, uh, again, the dump truck that we currently have is, is gone beyond its, uh, usable life, so it needs to be replaced, it was, uh, uh, the dump, the current dump truck will be sold through the Metten, uh, system, and, uh, the new dump truck will cost, it's the, uh, two thousand seventeen Freightliner Series M two dump truck is eighty thousand three hundred and twelve dollars, and there is equipment that needs to be purchased to outfit, fully outfit this for a variety of uses, and the cost for the dump box, the watering tank, and outfitting of necessary components is eighty thousand and twenty-six dollars, for a total cost of one hundred and sixty thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and funds are provided by the Motor Pool Equipment Replacement Company. Uh, item J is approval to purchase library serials through EBSCO subscription services, uh, which we do on a regular basis, uh, the Southfield Public Library respectfully requests that, that we approve the acquisition of magazines and periodicals through EBSCO subscription service of East Birmingham, Alabama, for a four-year period beginning July 1st, two thousand sixteen, through June 30th, two thousand and twenty, and the total cost will be, naturally, thirty thousand dollars per year, and the funds will be provided for this service in a two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen library budget, books and tapes account for adult and children's services. Item K is approval to purchase books and other library circ- circulating material through Ingram Plantent of, well, Burg, Tennessee. Uh, so, the cost of the books, again, is for a four-year period beginning July 1st, two thousand sixteen, through June 30th, two thousand twenty, and, uh, this item was approved by the Southfield Public Library Board during this annual budget process, the cost of will not exceed two hundred and thirty thousand dollars annually, and this represents an increase of less than one percent over the previous, uh, request of two hundred and fifteen thousand annually. Uh, funds have been provided for this purpose in the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen library bud- budget book and tapes account for adult and children's services. Item L is appointment of the representative in alternate to the Southern, Southeastern Oakland County Water Authority, SAWA, the two, the representative will be Lee Schultz, our city engineer, and the alternate will be John Misarena, our deputy city administrator, at no cost. Uh, the next item is, thanks, the next item is receipt of bids on the Section nineteen Edgewood Hills Water Main and Pedestrian Improvement. This, uh, the proposed project will take place on Waycross and Peak Skill in the Edgewood Hills subdivision, Section nine of the city. The acceptable bid of eight hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars was submitted by, uh, Burco Escavating Company of Oak Park, Michigan, the total cost of the project, including twenty-five percent engineering, inspection, testing, and contingencies, is a million one hundred and twenty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars, funds are provided by the Southfield Street Improvement Bond Local Street Account. Item N is approval of agreement with the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation, and as, uh, committee of the whole meeting on June the 15th, we found out this, and the, what? And what will happen is the nonprofit housing company, our corporation, will purchase forty-five tax foreclosed properties. And they will repair them, bring them up to code, and make them available for individual families seeking housing opportunities within the city of Southfield. The program is designed to make available more owner-occupied housing opportunities within the city of Southfield and to revitalize and stabilize neighborhoods. In conjunction with the acquisition of these properties, the city intends to contract with the Southfield Nonprofit Corporation, which I mentioned. And it was at no cost to the city. The nonprofit housing will bear the full cost of purchasing, administration, and upgrading the homes. But what this does is to prevent the people that are purchasing loans at auction and turning them into rental properties. They're, a lot of times, they're absentee landlords, they don't keep the property up. So this is a way of preventing this from happening, keeping our housing stock up, having new families move in in the city of Southfield to take advantage of our wonderful services. And our final item is authorization to apply for a PetSafe park three-year park program grant for Bedford Woods Park. And it's a dog park, and it's designed to allow both large and small dogs an opportunity to exercise in an area where it's safe for them and safe for the rest of the community because they won't be running down the road and running into, having automobiles run into them and all. And the Bedford Woods Park is where we will likely put it, but it's not cast in stone. So anybody that lives in the Bedford Park area, put your pencil paper down if you don't want the dog park there. We will find the right place and the right size for the dog park if we get the ten, twenty-five thousand dollar grant that's offered by PetSafe Company. And they, their headquarters in Knoxville, Tennessee. And it's the largest manufacturer of electronic pet training products in the United States. So we talked about this at our Committee of the Full Meeting. We're asking for the twenty-five thousand dollar grant, which they offer for new dog parks. That concludes our consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent agenda items, P, through O.
Support. It's been moved by Mr. Maddelbaum, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we approve the agenda, consent agenda items, K through O. Councilman Fracassi has already indicated he intends to vote no on the item M. Is there any other discussion?
I just have one quick question, Mr. Cruz, about item L. So is this normal for the office to bring appointments to committees like this?
Yes.
It is.
I've never seen one before. Yeah, there's, each community is offered an opportunity to put representation on these committees so that we have our say in the council and on some of our tax dollars. Okay, any other discussion? All votes, a favor, Secretary of State saying aye?
Aye.
A no? It is carried. Let the record show that Mr. Fracassi voted no on M, open. Okay? The next item is a public hearing. And Mr. Cruz, if you would handle that, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to make a brief presentation before we open the public hearing. And then afterwards, if you would permit me, I'd like to read the recommended resolution for your consideration.
Okay.
This will be an abbreviated version from the June 6th committee of the whole presentation for the viewing audience and members of residents that have attended tonight. But as I stated in the past, tonight is a proud moment for the planning department, the planning commission, and the city of Southfield with your consideration of adoption of the Sustainable Southfield Master Plan. You may recall that the master plan was last adopted in April of 2009. A five-year update is required by the state of Michigan through the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. And council approved the beginning of the update in 2014. We're on the final stage of the update, which also included a draft plan review and public commentary of sixty-three days, which ended on May 6th, planning commission public hearing on May 25th, and your public hearing adoption tonight. Sustainable Southfield, what is sustainability? Well, sustainable communities are places that balance their economic assets, natural resources, and social priorities so that residents' diverse needs can be met now and in the future. We have taken a holistic approach to land use planning, which includes environmental, social, and economic sustainability. And there are six grounding primary principles that have been compiled by the American Planning Association Sustaining Places Task Force. And we have strived to incorporate these six, which include livable built environment, harmony with nature, a resilient economy, interwoven equity, a healthy community, and responsible regionalism. How does healthy living relate to the master plan? Well, land use decisions can affect whether we have access to healthy food choices, parks and green space, good homes, jobs, and schools. I stated in the past that cardiovascular disease is the leading cause of death in the U.S., that diabetes and obesity epidemic, especially in our young adolescents, is prevalent. And simple land use decisions by requiring sidewalks, public pathways, bike routes, deep connectivity to the front entrances of our commercial, multiple-family industrial buildings can help in a small way fight these preventable health diseases and ultimately providing freedom of choice on how to get to things. We'll continue using our automobile. But the more public transit, the more cars and the more pedestrian connectivity that we provide to make it easy for people to just walk out the door, to access parks, restaurants, and so forth, the more people will likely to use it. We look at population trends. Southfield's current population has leveled off at about seventy-five thousand and is anticipated to slightly grow, even though our household size will shrink. Between 2010 and 2040, the age distribution will shift dramatically. Our household size has been reduced from the 1960s with an average of 3.46 persons per household to as low as 2.24 projected in 2040. Southfield has one of the largest retirement populations in the city at about nineteen percent. And we have higher-than-average senior population of sixty-five and older. And as I stated, simple things like increasing the size of signage, street signs, weigh-in, and so forth will be important to our aging population. With regards to housing and residential character, the typical family is now a minority. Aging baby boomers are driving the need for more condominiums, urban townhouses, and even micro units. Homeownership and occupancy rates have decreased slightly, and we continue to do so. We have a higher share of rental units, but we don't have enough distribution of the type of rental units that people are now seeking. With regards to academic development, our challenge is to create an image of a city that young people are attracted to, which also attracts others, including empty nesters and families. Southfield's ability to attract the new economy, the knowledge economy, and the creative class of people, our ability to compete with other communities. Between 2010 and 2040, private education and healthcare job sectors are forecasted to have the highest growth. And there is expected to be a fifteen percent increase in the total number of jobs in Southfield by 2040. Targeted businesses include technology, healthcare, and wellness in the automotive sectors. And this has been represented in our three largest companies from these sectors that moved into the city in 2015, including Hello World, Dur, and Great Expressions, equalling over eleven hundred jobs. Public input is an important component of the master plan. We want to build ownership, we want to build support for the council. And one of the approaches that we took was to establish a social media website, which allowed Southfield to solicit ideas and receive input from the public on a variety of twenty topics between January and July of 2015 on a weekly basis. And these results have been compiled, quantified, in our interviews in the master plan update. The challenge in the past was to increase participation from all age groups, especially the young. The old system was to post a public notice in the paper, set a date, and hope people showed up. And those that typically did were usually from one narrow demographic group. The plan should report that our public input results included in almost five hundred total participants. Our average participant was a thirty-seven-year-old female located in zip code 4075. Over forty-five percent of respondents were younger than thirty-five years old. But we still had a good percentage of residents over fifty-five. Almost a quarter of those participated were over fifty-five. We had over fifty-five hundred unique visits, six hundred and fifty unique ideas, and one hundred and seventy-five photos shared. The top three ideas that were presented as far as public input through this process included walkability and connectivity throughout the city, street and road repair, and redevelopment and/or renovation of older commercial properties, including Northland Mall. But we didn't stop there. We, over the course of the two and a half years, we held about three dozen additional meetings where we attended homeowners groups, we worked with the school district, we met with boards and commissions, and we included the council visioning session that was held in December 2015 and compiled all of those results, including our public workshop in January 20th, 2016, held by the planning commission, our public hearing in May, and tonight's public hearing. With regard to existing land uses, it's probably no surprise that Southfield is predominantly developed with only four percent vacant land, and the greatest majority user is a single family, representing almost forty percent of our land uses. Number two is rights of way at eighteen percent, office and commercial at twelve and a half percent. And rounding out the top four is public institutional at eight point five percent. And we use the activity-based existing land use based upon the land-based classification system that was adopted by the American Planning Association as our first step. We also provided future land use based on current and recent trends, based on council input and input from the residents. And the future land use is a primary policy guide, which helps council when they make their decisions for future zoning amendments. Our focus has been not on creating a broad land use category throughout the entire city, but to focus on subareas such as the city center, the DDA, the smart zone, and other commercial nodes and mixed-use nodes within the city. And these are represented and go in line with the overlay development district that the council has previously adopted. We also looked at public infrastructure, working with our planning departments. There's a focus on green infrastructure. Once this master plan has been adopted, we'll work closely with the council on updating our zoning ordinance to try to incorporate more green infrastructure to help reduce water storage and to increase clean, clean water resources within our city, help to reduce the strain on our public sewer water systems, increasing our connectivity through sidewalks and bike paths. And also, based on some input from Councilman Fracassi, to work on increasing our fiber optic network. With regard to public facilities and services, one of the things that we found and we're very proud of that the council's mentioned, that violent crime rates are down in the past seven years. And we're closely with fire, police, homeland security, human services, and Michigan Works to make sure that we have accurate and up-to-date information of our master plan. As well as working closely with the Southfield School, our colleges and universities throughout the city. And finally, the planning commission public workshop that was held on January 20th reaffirmed many of the things that we found throughout our process. The community wants more sidewalks, and they want redevelopment of the vacant property at Evergreen and Civic Center, which the council is currently working on, redevelopment of the Northland Mall property, which the council is currently working on. We include an update on technology and infrastructure for autonomous vehicles so that we position ourselves to deal with that capacity in the future. And redevelopment of Nine-Mon Road between Telegraph and Beet Road, which is currently under construction. The other thing I've mentioned throughout the process is that many times, people will look at Southfield only on the web or through their smart zone and never step a foot in the community. So how do others perceive Southfield? And it's important that we understand how we are reflected with the AARP livability index, our walk score, our transit score, our housing values, and our crime values. And we will continue to work on improving our scores through our infrastructure improvements, through our special programming, and through our housing. Ultimately, this all will help the council with Chapter 11, which has a broad list of implementation goals and objectives and action plan for each of the items that we spoke of tonight. And this action plan is for future consideration as you adopt the capital improvement program, as you adopt your budget, and as you establish yearly goals for the departments. And then finally, in your packet, we should receive updates that were included to the draft plan from June 6th that was presented to the council. Just very briefly, we inserted preliminary concept illustrations for the city center site that was presented to you at your study session last Monday. There's an insert update on Northland Mall, very preliminary concept of potential land use patterns. There's updated information on McDonald Towers and River Park Place based on the current work that's been done by the Southfield Housing Authority. We are updating photos to reflect real-time existing conditions. So as Lawrence Text Hobden facility has been completed, we have included updated photos. We've added the fiber optics to the implementation subsections as required, and we have updated our sources. Again, after the public hearing is closed, I'd be happy to answer any comments or questions. And again, I would respectfully request that I can read the recommended resolution into the record for your consideration. Thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak, please go to the microphone. We have three members.
Call the general PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 2483460439. And looking at the presentation, one of the things that stood out to me was a livable, built environment. And then you talked about houses and rental property. That's great, but what about the city's intentions to shut down our housing department? A department within the city that sustains itself, that does not use any budget money, if I'm correct? So how is it that we're talking about all of these forty-five foreclosed homes, fixing them up, to sell them? Are we just looking to sell houses, or are we looking to rent houses? And are we going to offer those houses, if the city is going to buy them and fix them up, to people that are on Section 8? And it's not just younger people that's on Section 8. You have a few older residents that receive, that receive Section 8. So with all of this stuff that we're looking to do, are we going to close down housing? So with all of this stuff that we're looking to do, are we going to close down housing? To the chair, I'd like an answer from Mr. Thorne or anybody up there.
Just, we typically don't answer questions that are posed at the microphone.
Okay.
Because whatever we say, you're going to hang us with it if we say one little thing that's wrong, and that's you, anybody. So if you want a question answered, write it down.
Mr. Fraser, I'm not going to hang my head on anything. You and I have fought for over twenty-five years, and for the last several years, we've had a meeting of the minds on issues. I know that you're passionate about the city, you know that I'm passionate about the city, and I think we share the same visions. We just want this city to be great again, and as Councilman Cruz said, "Southfield is too great to fail," something like that. Yeah, but I just want to know. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to come to the microphone to discuss? This is a public hearing. Seeing no one, the public hearing closed. Counsel, comments? Any counsel, do you have any?
I would just like to make a comment. I, when I was acting mayor, we were going through this Sustainable Southfield, and I think Terry grabbed hold of this thing, and a lot of other departments grabbed hold of this, and I'm really amazed at what it was turned out. It's almost halfway through it now. It's quite a piece of work, but it's really a great piece of work. I'll be very, very proud of it, and it tells you what we must know from a governing standpoint of where Southfield is going to go in the future and how we're going to get there. And so I think it's a very important project, but it was done very well. Thank you.
Mr. Crowe?
Mr. Crowe, I understand, and it came up on my council vote. We share our master plan with the surrounding communities, and we get comments back, and I wish that we could just... They share their plan with us on a consistent basis.
Yes, we're required by the law to share master plans with adjacent communities, regional entities like Semoc and Open County, transit authorities and utilities that are registered with the clerk's office. So we have to, at the beginning, before we start this process, we notify them of the beginning of the process. We have to notify them throughout the process. We provided a draft plan during that sixty-three-day review period, and then if they choose to, they can provide a letter, either recommending favor or pointing out issues that they might be concerned with. Open County Committee holds a meeting and makes a recommendation. That's another opportunity for any agencies to show up and do their objective support. And a copy of all those letters that we received were included in your package, part of the planning commission minutes. And I have routinely reviewed adjacent communities' master plans. And the simplest example I can give is that if we have residents on one of our borders and someone is proposing a major industrial use or something with a lot of truck traffic or something that may be an impact, we would weigh in on that.
But those letters, we don't see them in the council.
They talk to the planning department slash planning commission, and if, I keep a record of it, we usually mail them through the clerk's office and forward them to us.
Okay. That's it?
Yes.
Mr. Reddell?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment and commend Mr. Crowe and his staff, the seven hundred or so pages, including the appendix. It's a really very nice piece, really giving a look at what we want to do in Southfield, a real look towards the future, what we want Southfield to become, what we want it to stay as. So, and it's nice that it was done primarily within your department, with the input that we had from the different stakeholders in Southfield, even though they look fairly at work here, online. I know I participated online, I think it was a great idea to have that. It wasn't just night five, people who don't sleep at night or after work were able to participate and share ideas, and I think it was a great program, and I'm very excited for this master plan. So kudos to you and your staff.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mayor? No, I just wanted to repeat what I had said in our study session a couple of weeks ago, that this is an incredible undertaking, and in my tenure in the elected office in Southfield, I've never seen anything like this as far as the thoroughness, the just total analysis that was done, as well as the public feedback. As Mr. Crowe mentioned in the past, you might get a couple of dozen people sent in a postcard or attended a meeting, and this was a real concerted effort by the planning staff to get public input, and very successfully. The other thing, too, is that as Mr. Mount alluded to, this was done all in-house. And in the past, we have hired outside consultants, paid money for producing this state-required document, and this time, through Mr. Crowe's leadership, we were really focused, it was done in-house, which I think is a very important thing, because then all of the staff has really touched it, it's not handed off to somebody, it comes back as a package. In other words, our staff lived this and really had their hands very much in it. So I too would offer my appreciation, first of all, and congratulations on seeing this very long, very labor-intensive process to conclusion.
Thank you.
Mr. Horace?
Well, just to echo what everybody else has said, Terry, this is a wonderful piece of work. I really appreciate your leadership. I know it was a hard task to put this together, but I look forward to seeing the initiatives and all the action items implemented and moving Southfield forward.
Thank you.
Counsel, it was your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ferguson?
Do you have a resolution that is prepared?
Yes, it is in your packet. Could I take a moment, read it?
Sure.
Thank you. This is a resolution for city council dated June twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, a resolution to adopt a new master plan of the city of Southfield to replace the existing master plan, whereas the existing comprehensive master plan, further as reference to the plan. The city of Southfield was adopted on April thirteenth, two thousand and nine by the city council, and whereas, at least every five years after adoption of a plan, the council shall review the plan and determine whether to commence the procedure to amend the plan or adopt a new plan. And whereas, the preparation of a new comprehensive master plan was required to establish goals and guidelines to facilitate the direction, redevelopment, and growth of the city of Southfield to address changing demographic and marketing conditions created by the Great Recession and to reposition the city into the future. And whereas, sustainable communities are places that balance their economic assets, natural resources, and social priorities so that residents' diverse needs can be met now and in the future. These communities prosper by attracting and retaining businesses and people and offering individuals of all incomes, races, and ethnicities access to opportunities, services, and amenities they need to thrive. And whereas, on January twenty-seventh, two thousand and fourteen, the city council authorized the city planner on behalf of the planning commission to send the required notice of intent to update the comprehensive master plan in accordance with the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, Act thirty-three of two thousand and eight as amended, and to initiate the master plan procedure to update the plan in accordance with Section five point five nine of the city's zoning ordinance. And whereas, over one hundred and thirty letters were mailed to registered homeowner groups and condominium associations to encourage participation. Further, several public meetings and workshops were held with homeowner groups, civic associations, boards and commissions, public schools, and city staff throughout the process to encourage public input. And whereas, the social media platform, sustainablesouthfield.minecenter.com website was launched on January twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, for six-month public input period to solicit feedback on a variety of topics, which resulted in over fifty-five hundred individual visits, four hundred and eighty-six total participants, six hundred and fifty unique ideas, one hundred and seventy-five photos uploaded, and was shared on several of their social media sites. And whereas, on December fourth, two thousand and fifteen, the city council, mayor, clerk, treasurer, and other key city officials held a day-long visioning session focusing on five main topic areas: growth and infrastructure, redevelopment, housing renewal, cold enforcement, and leveraging staff in energy. And whereas, on January twenty, two thousand and sixteen, the planning commission held a public workshop and opened house on the preliminary draft master plan to seek additional input in public comment. And whereas, on February twenty-ninth, two thousand and sixteen, the city council authorized the planning department on behalf of the planning commission secretary to release the draft Sustainable Southfield master plan for the required sixty-three-day public review period and requirements of the Michigan Planning Enabling Act thirty-three of two thousand and eight as amended. And whereas, on April twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen, Oakland County Coordinating Zoning Committee held a meeting and by a free whole vote endorsed the county staff review finding the city's master plan was not inconsistent with the plan of any surrounding communities. And whereas, on May twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen, pursuant to the requirements of Article four, Section five point five nine, Comprehensive Master Plan Procedure, Chapter forty-five zoning, Title V zoning and planning, Code of the City of Southfield and the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, Public Act thirty-three of two thousand and eight as amended, the Southfield Planning Commission held a public hearing on the proposed Sustainable Southfield master plan and forwarded a favorable recommendation to the city council by unanimous vote. And whereas, on June twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, pursuant to the requirements of Article four, Section five point five nine, Comprehensive Master Plan Procedure, Chapter forty-five zoning, Title V zoning and planning, of the Code of the City of Southfield and the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, Public Act thirty-three of two oh eight as amended, the Southfield City Council held a public hearing on the proposed Sustainable Southfield master plan. Now therefore, be hereby resolved that Sustainable Southfield, a comprehensive master plan for now and the future, MP oh five, draft dated June sixth, two thousand and sixteen, be recommended for adoption in accordance with Article four, Section five point five nine, Comprehensive Master Plan Procedure, Chapter five zoning, and Title V zoning and planning, of the Code of the City of Southfield and the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, Public Act thirty-three of two oh eight, be approved for the reasons set forth in the city planner's recommendation. Number one, Sustainable Southfield is prepared by the City of Southfield Planning Department, the City of Southfield Planning Commission, and residents. It's been thoroughly studied by the planning commission at the planning commission study meetings and regular meetings. Sustainable Southfield will serve as a guideline and coordinate city decisions on new development and redevelopment, will assist in the review of development proposals to confirm and lead the goals and strategies of the plan and provide a basis for amendments to the zoning ordinance and zoning map. Sustainable communities are places that balance their economic assets, natural resources, and social priorities so that residents' diverse needs can be met now and in the future. These communities prosper attracting and retaining businesses and people and offering individuals of all incomes, races, and ethnicities access to opportunities, services, and amenities they need to thrive. Be therefore, be further resolved that Resolution number MP oh five is hereby recommended for adoption as amended from your draft June sixth, two thousand and sixteen plan.
Is this the intended? Chris Bush?
Yes.
How did you say we had put in the business dependence that we're talking about?
Yes.
And that letter included?
Yes.
So make a motion that that resolution is adopted.
Has been a little by Mr. Ferguson's support, but Mr. Cruz said we adopted the resolution as read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say goodbye or say hi.
Hi.
Opposed? It is Terry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is communications, and we have two people that wish to communicate with us. If you come to the microphone, Mr. Gerard Mullin. You have, you can name and address with the record, you have three minutes.
Gerard Mullin, Post Office, Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. Mr. Chairman, last week on Monday, June thirteenth, twenty sixteen, at six P M., this council held a committee, the whole meeting, at the library. During this two-and-a-half-hour council meeting at the library, I observed that Councilwoman Seymour's car was parked illegally in the library's fifteen-minute limited loading zone. Miss Seymour's car was parked there for the duration of this meeting for two-and-a-half hours. Not only did I notice this, but several other people witnessed this also. After two-and-a-half hours, the council moved their meeting to city hall. It was at that time that Miss Seymour moved her car from the library to the reserved parking area in the south parking lot near the building department's front entrance. I was under the impression these parking spaces were reserved for city vehicles only. I had mentioned twice before to this council about Miss Seymour's serial illegal parking on this city's municipal complex, if you recall, on December fourteenth, twenty fifteen, and on April twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen. To the chair, I would like to now ask this council a question. Does Miss Seymour have diplomatic immunity? Or has the city of Southfield become a little Chicago, or the lawful violation of the law is now considered a political perk as exercised repeatedly by Miss Seymour? Thank you.
The next person that wants to speak to us is Ms. Pamela Gerald. If you come to the microphone, give your name, address with the record.
I think the residents know who I am by now after thirty years, Pamela Gerald. I want all of you residents to know in the city of Southfield that our administration is not being fair to our acting Parks and Recreation Director, Doug Block. Doug Block has been acting as an understudy running our Parks and Recreation Department for little over five years. How long or how much longer should he wait to get the job? I think the city is confused about what a Parks and Recreation Director versus an Athletics Director does, and here's a brief description. A Parks and Recreation Director manages budgets, material, and staff for city parks and community centers. An addition of P and R Director develops and implements plans for the P and R system and directs the collection and analysis of data to support planning. Ideal applicant should have a bachelor's degree, master's preferred, but it's not necessary. Our very own Doug Block has a bachelor's degree, a master's degree in finance, and a P and R certification that our previous city administrator, Jim Shuret, may he rest in peace, suggested that he get. An Athletics Director, on the other hand, primarily oversees the work and coaches and related staff involved in athletic programs. An Athletics Director does not handle the department's budget or staffing, primarily he's only responsible, or she, for budgeting, promotion, and scheduling for sports teams. I purport that Doug Block has not gotten the job because some people in this section up here have a personal vendetta against Doug Block. Lastly, what does it say about the city using Doug Block for five years, not promoting him, saying that he's not the right person for the job? Doug Block has done everything that you have asked him to do, and some of it more than he should have done. Enough of allowing him to hoop, to jump the hoops, give him the job, he deserves it, and the people deserve Doug Block. Now I have a few more seconds left. Under council items... Under council items C, I noticed that our Councilwoman Tanya Morris went on a grant-writing retreat for a couple of days. I don't think because of what she does, she's a CEO of a nonprofit company that does write grants via her church, I don't think that she should be reimbursed for any grant writing, anything, when it could be perceived as a conflict of interest. I think something like that she should pay for on her own because we're not able to determine if it's going to be grant writing in the benefits of the city or what she does. And no councilperson writes any grants, so it's not necessary. Thank you.
Next item of business is the council. I have some expenses that need to be approved.
It's been moved to improve travel expense for Councilman Fracassi, April 29, the travel expense for Councilman Fracassi on May 12, the travel expense for Councilman Morris on March 7th and 8th, and the travel expense for Councilman Morris on May 25th and 26th.
The board, it's been moved by Mr. Malabon and supported by Mr. Cruz. They have approved the council expenses that have been presented to us as written. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, stick a finger saying aye.
I abstain. I abstain for both sides.
Sure.
And I abstain on mine, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor, I did. All those opposed? It is carried. Is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Fracassi.
Yeah, I have been here a time for a minute because I'm really ticked off, so to speak, about what happened recently. I, you know, the RTA, the Regional Traffic Association, had a press conference at Lawrence Tech, which I don't think anybody here was invited to. Kind of like, you know, to me, it was like a little poke in the eye because it was a part of the press conference was to hear from the audience and that being there, we were unable to make a statement regarding this RTA and what they intend to do. You know, for years, go back in history of Southfield, you know, they, nineteen twenty-eight, they cut a ribbon on Northwestern and Eight Mile Road or Gateway to Lake Michigan. Northwestern and I-6986 has never changed, has become a major, major artery going northwest. Most planners know that, that in any city or any state, throughout the country, water doesn't even attract people to go northeast. You can see it in Oscoda versus Traverse City. And when you see the way that they have figured out which way this, this arteries are going to be going, I tried to match I-696 Northwestern to Gresham, to Gibsonini, Ann Arbor, Washington County and Woodward Avenue. In any given time, if they took a traffic number on an I-696 and Northwestern, I mean, that is completely jammed constantly. And development hasn't gone that way. You have all kinds of universities, you got the Capitol Act in Lansing. If you go northwest, you have growth on the outs, anything that is going northeast. And yet, four counties are going to be assessed, there'll be a hundred and twenty dollars on a $200,000 house. And, and even though we have SMART, that tax approval would be on top of, or paying SMART. This is very serious because I think they're picking and choosing as to who's going to be an economically developed community and a strong community by eliminating Southfield from, from exposing Northwestern Highway and I-696 to Detroit. If you look at what they're doing, you have Troy is involved in it and, and you have Detroit to Chamber involved in it. And I don't see anybody in Oakland County fighting this, this route the way they are pricely said. You know, right now, if you take a SMART bus, you have to go to the Northland Bus Center, then you gotta get on the D dot. Well, I know from experience, if you go, if you hire an individual from Detroit and you go to that depot, sometimes you wait almost two hours for a SMART bus to pick up an individual. So restaurants that are occupied space in, in Southfield, they get together and they have their own little jetty that picks up at Northland and gets their cooks and waitress and everybody with their little jetty. But I wonder why you don't have restaurants for some of these uses that demand employees of all levels. Unless you have a car, you really can't get a job in Southfield or any place. Farmington, Farmington Hills is having the same problem. No, I think planner left, but most people would need some kind of transportation to get to work. And not only that, the future plans show that people are gonna be walking and, and they're gonna be biking and they're gonna be doing this and, and you need bus transportation to make a viable community. And I guess I just see it as being overlooked and, and I know if you said my piece as Semcog and, and I seem like the little guy outside the circle, but I'm really concerned about it to this council. And I think that maybe after you take a real strong look at what's going on, especially when you see the Q1 being going from Detroit to Midtown, I don't seem worried about Highland Park, which is a disaster zone. You know, they're talking about Detroit, Detroit, Detroit. And, and that's fine. I have nothing against what's happening in Detroit. But I, but Southfield with this twenty-seven, thirty million square feet of office, we rival the city of Cleveland and Kansas City. And so, I mean, if you're looking like, like if Cleveland was sitting here, you would just go around it. And for Kansas City, you'd go around it. Well, people need to get to work and for the economic growth of this city, we're gonna have to have transportation. And I tried to work where SMART or people into Detroit, D dot can come out here, but they can't. You have a, a, a Michigan Department of Transportation location, Eleven Mile and Lasher, and great homes using it. If you have a SMART going into Detroit, it's gotta stop at Northland. A D dot's gotta stop at Northland. And so there really isn't a way that, that anybody travels Washington, Oklahoma, well, that's very busy, everybody gets on the expressway, goes downtown. But there's no way of, of getting the people, you know, to say, for example, at that depot, getting on a bus and taking them on an express downtown Detroit where everything is happening. So now, I'm concerned about them sucking the businesses out of Southfield to make this, this Detroit happen, which again, I favor them getting strong, but I've gotta protect the city that I live in and that I work in and that I'm a council member again. And I gotta make sure that, that we can compete in every facet that we need. When you talk about economic development, you gotta get people to work. If you're not gonna get a person to work, the businesses are gonna go where they can get the people employed. And, and that is a big thing. And I don't know why they're overlooking Southfield. It goes all the way back to the Talis study and everything else. And, and they just continue to, to get politically pushing Gresham and, and Ann Arbor and, and wherever else in North Birmingham or where, I don't know what they're gonna do, but I know what we need going northwest. And, and so they're saying, like you said, they're putting money behind this issue now. Troy is putting some funds behind it, so is, is Detroit. It doesn't, I don't know, I think we ought to get our Oakland County mayors together and commissioners together and start fighting down the other side. I don't know if you were at the last, no, it wasn't the last mayor's thing, but they spoke, they, they have a speaker that goes around talking about, about this RTA and tell what they're gonna do to us. And I just get to the point where I had enough with it. And I don't hear anybody protecting, and I'm sorry, I don't know why brokers are getting into this, but, but somebody's gotta step up and say, listen, you know, we need transportation in this city. And we need, and we need to get into the various nodes that, that create people to go into jobs. And so if people wanna go from Southfield to Detroit, that bless them. I have to get somebody that lives in Detroit out here to do some work and to, from Far Burnville, wherever you, you know, wherever, any event, it should be free to come into a community and have transportation to get there. And, and it's just unbelievable that they come here to Lawrence Tech to, to, to make this press conference and, and tell us other than that, but you can't even opt out. That's the worst part about it. You know, they say, well, we got SMART, we don't need you, but there's something to have to pay. And in fact, I just really think that, you know, the administrators and, and managers from Oakland County and Farmington Hills and nobody, probably get together with mayors, elected officials and fight this thing. And I'm not against mass transit, but you look what they've spent on Q1. It's unbelievable. We could have had a real good bus system to get people to work. And looking at it just from that standpoint, you know, we have OCC that, that is, may expand. You gotta get kids and people to OCC. You gotta get them to OTU. You gotta get them to, to all these other essentials that's here, all these other places they wanna go. But more importantly, some of the retail is gonna be limited by how many employees they can get to their, because they start at five-thirty in the morning, they start prepped. And, and you know, this jetty used to go around from Golden Mushroom and, and a couple other restaurants, pick up at Northland to get these people to work. Dishwashers, waitresses, you know, people who cooks, everybody, managers, all these people, without that, they can't open a restaurant. And so anyway, I know we're bidding today, but I tell you, I see Craig, the twelve colony, and I see the regional transit system, some guy talking about great it is, but each one says, oh, to increase economic benefit. Well, I'm gonna protect mine. That's it.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Freiter, can I just make a comment about this?
Sure.
I met with the folks behind this village several months ago, and I do the absolute same conclusion. They're going to ask us for one-point-two mills for twenty years. For a number of people that own property in Southfield, that's, that will be a substantial tax increase if this passes. And there is absolutely nothing in their plans for this city. And I told them that, you know, I'm all for mass transit, but you can't leave Southfield out. I totally agree with what Mr. Fracassi has said. We're being short-changed and yet we're being asked to foot part of the bill, so.
Mr. Sherman, you said one thing and, and mention.
Go ahead.
Sorry, to me, it's a real hurt that Gil Silverman passed away. He was on our nonprofit, he was with Nishda. He served us really well at McDonald Towers and he'd been with us. He's a noted developer, his offices are on Telegraph Road. He's, he's been here, Angels of Southfield in the early days and Silverman and the host with Silverman once, built so many things in Southfield and tried what they did. And I'm really sorry to see that he passed away. Sorry I missed his funeral, but I did go to the lake, but I looked in the paper, so. Anyways, just wanna wish my condolences to the family and, and everyone else who keep it, so much for it.
Okay. Is there anything else? Kenny Allen, Mr. Cruz.
I've been going back and forth with this in my mind, but I do feel that it's necessary to mention it. So it's kinda just made a few weeks ago that one of the city employees took it upon himself to make a post on my personal Facebook page in a way in which I felt was, I perceived it as an attack and maybe a threat. And it was not appreciated. It dealt with or spoke to the fact that, as I was campaigning a year or so ago, that I made certain promises to union people that is just totally untrue. Let me just say for sure, I want everybody to stand up for it. I absolutely want us to get to a point where we have a contract for our employees. That's absolutely true. I don't think that's any different than anybody that's sitting up here. We've made offers and we're trying to negotiate in good faith. And so it's not something that I could ever promise as an individual or anybody that's here to make something happen, but in order, it takes two to negotiate. I've been in new union negotiations. I'm a union person. And what you find in those types of negotiations is that usually people walk away mutually dissatisfied. You get a little bit of what you want, the first, the second, look at what they want. And we come back to, you know, we go to business, as usual, come back to negotiate a few years after that. I really, I really found what was stated on there, and anybody who wants to read what was stated can go to my Facebook page and read it. I did not delete it. But I think it was insubordinate on this person's behalf. I think it was irresponsible as a union leader. And his, and this person's union should be, they should talk to him about what he has done. It's inappropriate, it was wrong, and I don't appreciate it at all. So I just wanna, again, once again, state clearly for the record for all those out there that may think otherwise because of things that he or others may be saying. I want those contracts settled as soon as possible, but it takes two to take up. So, you know, we're working in good faith on this side and you guys need to do the same on other end. So that being said, I appreciate that. I will be turning over that, that post to the city administrator as well as the police chief as well.
Thank you.
Can I comment too on that as well?
Sure.
My name is also mentioned in the post and I had, Councilman Cruz and I had conversations about it. We all, I believe, want our employee contracts to be negotiated. I know we've got nine unions and I think we've already come to some closure with three of them. But I know earlier this evening, the city administrator, Zorn, had stated that raises were offered. And so I was just wondering what the status was because we know that we've reached out. As, as Councilman Cruz said, it takes two. And so I'm wondering if you could just give us a little bit of update as to what happened when we did go there. And for me too, when I campaigned, just for the record, I did not campaign on making any promises about raises. I just feel adamant that, you know, employees should get raises if, if, if there's some fiscal stability from the city administration. So can you just give us some information?
Before, before you enter, I'm gonna ask our city administrator to upgrade us on negotiations, but we, we need to do that in closed session so we can have a full discussion on where we're at, what's going on, you know. So it's not appropriate to do it at this point, but to do it in closed session. But we'll do it.
But you just stated.
And I have comfortable saying, as I said earlier, the next two weeks, we have three days, worked with three of our bargaining groups, where we were, they're all day sessions. We'll go through that and then it's our intent to come back to council and report what we requested closed-door session to update council on July 11, that Monday evening.
Okay. Mr. Redd.
I guess I'm failed to comment also, my name was in that post. So it's... So, it's, I've spoken to the gentleman that initiated that post, and I'm pretty much straightforward, and I indicated to him that whatever goes only closed session is closed session, and it's illegal for me to have come in on. But I did indicate that, and when I was campaigning, and I have said fastly, stayed true to every statement I made when I was campaigning, that I wanted to see the contracts resolved, and that's where I've been, and that's where I consistently stated throughout my term as a councilperson. And in talking to him, obviously, felt comfortable with my comments and my statements. So I'm only speaking simply because my name was in that post, and everybody has had to speak on it also. And I'm open to any, anybody that wanna talk to me about it. And I can only speak to what I can speak on, because I have learned through, and this is just, but FYI, that in closed session, anything that's mentioned is illegal, and I can, you know, I can get, go to jail, I guess, if I talk about what was spoken in closed session.
Yeah, wood shit.
Yeah, I know, that's wood shit. But obviously, on Michigan Municipal League or National City, whatever, they indicated that it is illegal to speak about things that are spoken of in closed session.
The only thing I can say is, maybe my name was on there too, but if I knew what Facebook was.
It was his voice sometimes.
No, the only thing I have, it's, it's a benign subject based on everything else on the, for a long time, we complained about these microphones in this room. Apparently, they've been fixed, but there's an echo in this place that's bouncing off. I don't know if, maybe it's my ear, but it seems like there's a real echo. And these are hard walls, and the sound just really bounces off, especially if they have a deep voice. So maybe a little fine tuning, a little. Okay. Paul, Mr. Manalvar?
Your name was in about? No, my name, as far as I know, my name was not involved, but thankfully. The, this month, so hours get longer, it gets warmer, there's a lot of people outside, and just this month, there have been, I mean, three different traffic accidents involving people, cars, pedestrians, and I want to stress to everyone, you know, please don't text and drive, please don't text and walk, that can also be dangerous. Each accident was different, some were running through red lights, some were stop signs. One car in one particular accident jumped the curb and knocked out the intersection lights. And just be careful if you're walking at night, make sure you're visible, you're paying attention to the traffic rules and any other types of traffic. But also wanna give kudos to our first police and fire departments and paramedics. They were all on scene quickly, they helped the situation. One of the incidents, the police were already there doing crosswalk duty at a school, and someone just ran right through a stop sign in T-bone, someone that was doing carpool. But one of the accidents was 1:00 in the morning in an intersection. The fire trucks were out there, I think there were several police cars, their lights flashed, and they had to close the intersection. I was, I was watching what was going on, and there were several attempts by motorists trying to maneuver through the blockade, police cars, the ambulance, and the fire trucks. And our police did a great job making sure that no one could get through, because there were, there was a lot of debris in the road, there were still pedestrians or motorists that were still being treated on the scene. So I want to urge everyone, you know, please be careful this summer with being out, even during daylight hours. It can get tricky with if you're on a taxi, you know, if you're on a bike, please wear a helmet, and please have a safe summer. Thank you.
Okay. Next, agenda, Mr. Mayor.
I have a couple of things that are coming up I wanna talk about, but also, two events that happened the last two Fridays. On June 10th, we dedicated the baseline Pocket Park. This was a four-year effort to celebrate the, and commemorate the history of surveying in America and Eight Mile as the first successfully surveyed road in the United States, using modern surveying techniques, as espoused by Thomas Jefferson. Pocket Park is open, there are benches, it was paid for by the public, by corporations, businesses on Eight Mile, organizations, and many individuals. And it's at Eight Mile and Rufflin, that's one block east of Southfield Freeway. I also wanted to mention that last Friday, Councilman Focasi and I attended the DIR Open House ribbon cutting for their renovated facility, their marvelous facility on Northwestern Highway, just west of Lushville Road. DIR, as the council knows, came to for a public-private partnership last year and moved into a purchase rather of the former PTE Service Center on Northwestern Highway, that was really a very dilapidated 1968, 1970 office building. And last January, they moved in and are now fully in there with an operating system, research center in the back, testing center, $40 million investment in Southfield, and 500 jobs were relocated here. And you talk about a miraculous makeover of a very tired building. It is absolutely beautiful. But coming up, on July 1st, we have our, is the deadline for our annual Community Pride Award nominations. I encourage people to nominate properties. And again, there are 12 categories, so individual homes, and we have master gardener homes as well, and just well-maintained homes, those are two of the categories. We have apartments, we have schools, we have condos, we have religious institutions. Again, there are small and large businesses are two of the categories. So once again, we're all about curb appeal, we're about putting the best foot forward, we want to maintain a attractive and safe community. I encourage everyone to nominate either private homes or any of the, any of the categories I mentioned. Again, we wanna reward and recognize curb appeal, and the people that are putting the effort behind making their properties attractive. And speaking of attractive properties, this Sunday, June 26th, will be the 10th Annual Southfield Garden Walk. This year, again, that Sunday, June 26th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. And this year, it's in the Farm Brook and Stony Croft neighborhoods. Registration for the event is at Berg Historic Park at Civic Center and Berg Road. The cost is only $10, and there are 17 homes on display. It's really a great event, and every year it's moved to a different section of the city. This is sponsored by the Southfield Parks and Garden Club. And I would encourage anybody that's interested in gardening, or just wanna support the neighborhood of the Parks and Garden Club, to come on out on this Sunday. On Monday, July 4th, is the annual Magnolia, Roseland Woods, Fourth of July Parade. It starts at 10:00 a.m. at Magnolia Center, that's on Dursen, and winds through Magnolia and Roseland Woods Neighborhoods, and ends up on the playfield of Very Slow with the School on Nine Mile. And that event is free, there's a picnic afterward, sponsored by this year, Roseland Woods Neighborhood. And just today, I received a call from the City Laser Village, they are hosting a shred day, that's something that we've done a number of times in Southfield, for people to bring documents that they'd like to have shredded. Again, the, one of the fastest crimes that's happening in the country, fastest growing crimes, is identity theft. This is an opportunity to shred medical documents, financial documents, anything with social security numbers or personal information. It is free, and Laser Village is sponsoring this, and it's on Saturday, August 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Laser City Hall on Southfield Road. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. Administration, Mr. Zerbi.
The, I'm requesting authorization to submit our redevelopment of the application, particularly, we are requesting that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign the application. With the adoption of the master plan, that was the last item in our checklist, we started this process February 14th, the CIP revealing a number of our processes as we go through. So we have now completed the last item, and we'd like to go ahead and submit this. This becomes a very critical piece as we go through the Northland redevelopment and the parcel across the street. Those communities that have redevelopment already are able to get additional levels of assistance from the state. Historically, Southfield was the first community to have this designation. A few others in the renewal process have gotten in before us. We've now completed all those tasks, so the council can adopt that resolution. That's attached to my documentation.
Mr. Chairman, floor. It's been moved by Mr. Focasi, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we approve the redevelopment already community resolution that was presented. Is there any discussion? All those favor, signify the standing, any opposed, it is carried.
Thank you. Mr. President, if I may comment, I'd like to thank council for their adoption of the budget. As the budget indicated, 65% of our revenues come from property taxes, and we actually, the budget adopted had a three-tenths of a percent less in revenue from property taxes. I'd like to remind people that Southfield, late November during the Great Recession, our employees, while they gave concessions, they were nominal compared to what other communities gave. While other communities may be giving raises and that, we are still not near the level that our, as our employees didn't give up something, those communities that are giving raises still are not near what their employees gave up. As I stated earlier today, we are offering, their raises are on the table. During that same period from 2008 to present, our fringe benefit rate went from 23 to 24 cents to 46 to 48 cents for every dollar payable. We know next year, with our, in order to meet our pension obligations, we're looking at an additional six cents per dollar payable, taking us to roughly a fringe benefit rate, depending upon the bargaining group, between 52 to 54 cents per employee. The number of retirees in Southfield now exceeds the number of active employees, and our strategy and the budget we approved is we pay as we go. We solve the numbers of where we're at in funding our employee retiree healthcare. So those are the things that we're negotiating. For my negotiating team, life would be much easier to go back to the days pre-proposal A, when we were arguing over what percent. Again, we do have offers on the table, there are some additional items we're looking at to get cost containment associated with those old liabilities. We will stay on the table till this is resolved, and we get something that addresses the city's legacy costs within our economic means. Thank you.
Okay. Brad Maturi.
In the safe room, Mr. President?
Okay. Clerk, there's an expense come for?
The travel expense for banks to attend the International Institute of Municipal Clerks Conference.
It's been moved by Mr. Manalvar to approve the travel expense report for his banks for the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, supported by most everyone else. Is there any question? Okay. Mr.? Mr. Reddell, supported, the only one that's saying. Is there any discussion? All those favor, signify the standing, any opposed, it is carried. Man, clerk, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. I would like to remind everyone that on Tuesday, July 10th, it will be the last day to register to vote for the upcoming election, which will be held on August 2nd. If you are already registered to vote, you do not have to re-register anyone 18 years of age who has not registered before, or if you're new to our community, this is an opportunity to get registered, so you can vote in Southfield. If you are not sure if you're a registered voter, you can go to our website, www.citiesouthfield.com, under the Government tab, if you click on the City Service Office, and if you scroll down on the right-hand side, it will say, are you registered to vote? If you click on that tab and enter your information, it will tell you exactly where you vote, the precinct that you vote at, and all information that you need. And it's especially useful, because if you just move to the city, sometimes people think they did register, however, they're still registered at their previous community. We're also accepting applications for absentee voter ballots. Anyone on our permanent absentee voter list has been sent an application. We've received probably over 6,000 that have been returned. So please, if you're interested in voting absentee, if you've never voted before, I encourage you to try it. On November, if everyone is familiar, they've eliminated straight party voting. The lines are gonna be long, there is no way to eliminate the long lines, you can have as many voting booths as you want, but it's just gonna take time for people to read the ballots. So the clerks are really encouraging everyone to vote absentee. You can vote at the comfort of your home, you can take as much time as you want, it will be a two-sided ballot, and they're saying the average time is gonna be 10 minutes per person, depending how fast you read. So if you just take those numbers and times it by the number of people that may come out, now may be the time to try absentee voting if you haven't done it before. So feel free to call our office, 248-796-5150. You can also download the application from our website, it is online for both the primary and the general elections. And I think that's all for now.
When is the last time you've been asked for an absentee ballot?
The last time that you can ask for an absentee ballot is the day before the election. However, that day, the ballots cannot leave the building. The Saturday prior to the election, up until 2:00 p.m., is the last day that the ballot can leave City Hall. But we do not encourage you to wait to the last minute, because...
I suspect you're homebound, and you're doing it by mail, you probably wanna give yourself at least a week or more.
That's true, but most of the people that are homebound, we really do a good job encouraging them to be on our absentee voter list. So if you are homebound, ask to be on our permanent absentee voter list, or check to see if you are on. And that way, you're automatically sent an application, so you can apply for a ballot.
Mr. Fraser, I have two factoids that I've done. First of all, Community Pride Award applications are available on our website, under Community Relations Department. They're also available in the lobby here. And tickets for the Garden Walk are available through my office, or can be purchased on the day of at the Berg, on this Sunday, June 26th, but will be available all week long from the mayor's office.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have nothing to schedule, and there are no ordinances, so that concludes our agenda for this evening. Unless there's something else that someone wants to bring up, for the good of the organization. Seeing no one speaking, this meeting is adjourned.